Welcome, everyone. Let me get a few things out of the way. Tonight's meeting will be in two parts. One is going to be a workshop, which will begin now, and the second part will be the regularly scheduled board meeting. So with that, let me begin by saying it's a little after 6:00 p.m. It's Tuesday, September 11th, 2018. We're in the Sierra Room at the Community Center. It's the time, date, and place for both the workshop and the regularly scheduled board meeting. And with that, we'll begin with Mr. Walker and the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the flag salute takes on maybe a little greater significance today, given this is 9/11, 17 years ago. It was not a good day. With that, we'll go to -- well, this is the call to order of the board workshop, and we'll go to the roundtable discussion among board members, staff, and principals addressing the following topics. Presentation of the 2017-18 Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium (ASBAC) results for the Carson City School District. And with that, Sue, would you like to begin?
Susan Kima for the record. Before we begin this discussion, the board, I want to make sure the board knows that we will be having -- this sets off a series of compliance pieces, but also school improvement discussions for the district. Tonight, we'll be talking about smarter balance. At the next board meeting on September 25th, we will be covering the Nevada's school performance ratings. October 9th, Principals Jen Ward and Susan Squires will be reporting back as two-star schools a year in review, just to talk to us about their ratings and progress for the new year. And then on October 23rd, we'll have our three-star schools presenting in our workshop. And then in November, we will have our -- or October 23rd, we will have our middle school principals will be here, going over school improvement, their star ratings, as well as ASBAC information. And then in November, we will be focusing on high schools. And that'll take us up, gives the board time with each of the schools to go over their school improvement planning process, and it gives administrators time to process all the data that's flowing in now as well. So just know that this isn't the end tonight.
Okay, Sue, but just for the record for tonight, all principals, excuse me, elementary school principals and middle school principals were invited to this meeting?
Yes.
We have what, one, two, three principals?
I need to take some responsibility in that the invitation from my office. I sent it out a little bit later than probably it should have been out, to give them not as much as notice as they needed to, as well as we know that some principals, such as Frich, they have a PTA meeting tonight, and Dan was scheduled, that was planned. So there's some school events that were going on, coupled with my late notice. I apologize for that, and I take full responsibility.
Okay, and let the record reflect, we have three elementary school principals, but we also have the principal from -- and director from the Carson Montessori School, Ms. Jessica Daniels.
Yes. So to start off with this particular workshop, the grades 3 through 8 smarter balanced scores have arrived, and individual student results have either been mailed home or sent home in student folders that go home on a regular basis, a weekly basis in the elementary. You've been provided numerical and visual data of the district's individual school results. Dr. Medina will review the ASBAC data in this, the handout that you have before you. We did not have state data until the NDE put out their press release, and the handout you have tonight has some state data for comparison purposes. Unless the board wants to, we're not going to hover long on the results. The results do not meet our expected performance levels. I believe your comments and questions will mirror our thinking, and that while we had pockets of improvement, it did not reflect in the results district-wide. The bulk of the workshop, if you so desire, will be directed on our plan of moving forward, which addresses identified areas of improvement. Unless you have any questions, I thought we'd spend a little time, have Dr. Medina go over the data that you have not yet seen.
I do have one question I hope we talk about is, I was kind of looking at comparing results like third grade math last year to fourth grade math this year, or, you know, whatever, subsequent years. And so I've noticed that all of the grade levels seem to have a decrease in math, and so I'm kind of wondering if there's something going on with that that we want to discuss. Hopefully, that'll be a topic that we talk about.
Okay.
Could you clarify, when you look at the math sheet, so you're saying from third to?
Yeah, so if you look at, you know, year one, third grade, so then the second year they're fourth graders, so when you look at those math proficiency scores, I see a decrease in all of the grade levels. So reading, mostly there's a little bit of improvements, there's a couple areas that we're like, okay, well, what happened here? But with math across the board at all of the schools, I think, I believe it was all of the elementary schools, I saw a decrease in math proficiency.
If you look, Susan Kima for the record, if you look on the ASBAC results, on the math summative results, on the yellow page, but also look at the second page of your handout, you can see the differences as far as the scores. So if you're going to go from year to year, how did the school went, what did it look like, you can see from 2017 to 2018, there's the differences as you go down there. The majority of the schools improved their math scores overall for math, but if you're looking from grade level last year, third grade, to fourth grade this year, you can see under percent proficient on the yellow sheet. You can see third grade was 50.6% proficient, and then in fourth grade, that same group of, that same cohort was 52.6% proficient. So they increased, they improved. You can see with Boardawick, for third grade to fifth grade, they decreased. Frich, they increased. Empire, they.
So I was specifically, I'm talking, so like, so if you look at Boardawick, you, we had 67%, 67.9% 2017.
Right.
Then you go to 2018, so this is when they're fourth graders, and there's 52% proficiency.
Right.
So that's the same group of students.
Right.
So what I was looking at is cohorts of students, and we should see progress that way.
Yes.
So if you look at the, your page that has the state data.
Where is that one? That is, you have it, but in a different size. You have, you have, so it's, your state data is on page two of your handout in the bottom, the bottom in the new handout.
So if you look at the math scores statewide, as well as nationally, the assessment results go down with each year in math, and that's, there's kind of two pieces to that. One is the difficulty level of the assessment. The test gets a little bit more difficult as you move through the grade levels. The second one is likely a function of the Common Core, current eighth graders haven't fully had the Common Core math since they were in kindergarten, whereas third graders have had more Common Core math than, relative to how long they've been in school. So to go cohort, to look at a cohort and go through, I'm not sure if that's going to give you a valid, if you're going to come to valid conclusions if you look at it that way.
Eventually, I would say, but not at this point, with the inception of the.
Yeah, I would say that as more kids have more access to the Common Core standards for more years, the higher grade levels, those scores will go up. But it's also the difficulty level of the tests. It might come to where it's equal, but it might not.
Maybe that's part of the discussion. I mean, as we spend a lot of time looking at our curriculum and updating kind of the tools we're giving our teachers, so if a group of students is scoring in a certain range in third grade, then we might need to up the rigor a little bit to keep them improving for fourth grade instead of seeing a dip. So if we know that the test is that much more challenging, then we need to look at what we're doing and what tools we could put in place, is what I'm thinking.
Yes, and that's a big part of our moving forward improvement plan, is to be addressing the rigor this year, and you'll see how we're going to address that when we get to that point.
Okay, Ricky, go ahead with your presentation.
So in your, your handout, the one that you just brought up, you have basically three pages that have all of the data. So there's one that says ELA by school, and it has a percent proficient for the previous year as well as this year. The far right column has the difference, so if it's negative, that means that the percentage went down. If it's positive, that means the percentage went up. You have the same table that's math by school, so it gives you the math results for the last two years. And then there's the state table that gives you the district, the state, and the difference. And the state data, currently, the only thing that's been released is the grade level performance. So we don't know how other schools have done, we just know as a state, third graders on the math test did this well, fourth graders did this well.
Go ahead and continue, we don't look good, so go ahead.
Yeah, so that's, that's the data. I was going to let you take some time to look at that and then see what questions there were.
Limited amount of time, but Ricky, you know, eight years ago, you had given me, along with Sue, the introduction to the learner-centered model of education here in Carson. Just as we go through this, could you give us a definition, and there's going to be a lot of questions coming forward, okay, of what is the learner-centered approach?
I'd say that the learner-centered approach is going to where, I would say there's kind of two parts to it. The first part is that there's a defined system that all students are traversing through. So there's a clear and well-defined curriculum that everybody has access to from kindergarten through the 12th grade. So that's the first part. The second part is identifying where students are in, on that continuum, and meeting their needs, making sure that they, we're not only just delivering the instruction, but they're actually, they're absorbing that information, and they're able to problem solve and meet the rigors of the Common Core standards.
Okay, and then, along with that, I know, I remember the day that you gave examples of what would constitute a learner-centered approach rather than the delivery method, and you indicated that all students don't learn the same, or may learn in different ways, but what you said, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that everybody's given an equal opportunity to, to learn and know and use the standards.
Yeah, and I would, I would say not an equal opportunity, it's not, opportunity is not good enough. It's equal, at the end of the day, when they graduate 12th grade year, they have to be college and career ready. It's not that, they just have the opportunity to be college and career ready.
Which means we have to do something, which is different than learner-centered model than what we were doing, to get these kids at a level where they know what to learn, not only what to learn, but how to learn, and then how to express the clarity of thought that they have learned. So I want to keep this in mind as we go through here, because I've got a lot of questions. Because when I see these scores, and especially that last page on the, how we compare statewide, not good. So, and we've had eight years to do this, okay.
Do you have any more questions about the data itself? All right. So if you go on to page three of your new handout, where it says areas of improvement, we have disproportionate scores across schools and across special populations. We're not consistently moving forward in the forward direction in school-wide grade level subgroup data, grade level or subgroup results, except for at Fremont, Sealagoor, and Empire at this time. The tests, the ASBAC, we have been giving it for three years. Districts have only had two years' worth of data. So do we know if this is a trend, or do we know if this is a dip and it's going to go back up? We only have two years' worth of data. The second point is that we lack depth. You've heard the saying that, you know, sometimes where people can, things are a mile wide and an inch deep. That's where we're at. We've been afforded a lot of opportunities for our staff and our district through the implementing the strategic plan, and the Race to the Top Grant, the changes in the state assessments, and we've been doing a lot of system building. So if you look on the fourth page of your handout, you'll see our plan moving forward. The goal is to transfer ownership. When you have changes like what we've gone through as a state, where all the standards have changed, where all the assessments have changed, where we've been implementing the learner-centered model, the staff expects some kind of leadership and guidance from the district office, but it can only go, that can only go so far. Now it's time to make sure that the same, the same energy is out there at the sites, and it's time to transfer that leadership to the sites. So in order to do that, there's some things that you'll see on the, some actions that you see on that slide. We knew that, I knew that as soon as Dr. Perdare would retire, that I wasn't going to replace him with a secondary person, it was a need to replace him with somebody who was going to be able to champion the elementary level. The Director of Elementary Curriculum and Assessment and Instruction was hired this summer of 2018, and I have Mr. Chad Hicks here with us tonight. He's been in every elementary school on a daily basis. He's been listening to boots-on-the-ground feedback from teachers and administrators. He's been attending leadership meetings and PLCs. He is well-versed in the Read by Three Grant and our Science and Math Grant, and is there to support those STEM coaches and the implementation specialists for English language arts. We have, as a district, revised our district leadership meetings. Mr. Cassiopeo, your wife has participated in those district leadership meetings, and as she well knows, oftentimes, they were led by success for all. But we're leading them for school improvement in this, starting this year. The first one, and everybody's invited, is on September 14th, this Friday, from 8:30 to 3 o'clock. Correct? It's going to be in the Carson, up at WNC, in the Golden Nugget Ballroom. Most of the instruction will be from 8 to noon, and then the schools will be working in the afternoon on their school improvement planning. With that, I'm going to stop, because you'll see that there's some other pieces there that I would like Mr. Hicks to talk about.
Chad Hicks, for the record, although the results don't look good, we know they don't look good, I want to say that I'm very excited about this work. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. It's, I made it a point the last three weeks to be in as many schools and classrooms as possible, and I've done so. And it's, I'm amazed at how, how many individuals are working so hard, how many resources we have in our schools. And when I look at these results, it doesn't make sense to me, based on what I see. I think this is, whenever, whenever new initiatives come together, and a lot of new initiatives come together, that's when it's, the work, it's, the anxiety raises, and the work is tough. And so I've been thinking about it a lot, and I'm, my plan moving forward is really to look at, to break everything down into smaller pieces, and focus more on the process, the day-by-day, getting better with our instruction, and being in classrooms, and really looking at our practice. And, and I've noticed in some of our classrooms that there are some pieces that are missing. We really do need a strong writing program in each of our schools. We need to focus on, and I'm going to just go back to Mr. Swarzak, you mentioned something that is very important, and that is the student, the student learner-centered model. Some of the work we're going to be doing, we're starting it this Friday, is around John Hattie's work, and it's the barometer of influence. He just, he just published, oh, there's over a million case studies, and published the effect size, and what we do in classrooms, and how it has an effect on children. And the students being able to report out where they are and being part of that learning process, it has a 1.5 effect size, which is one of the highest effect sizes we can have. So that's going to be part of our work also, is really students being part of the process. We're going to continue that. This Friday, we're going to look at our data, we're going to break it down, and we're going to be very strategic about how we move forward with our data. We have plans for that, but the most important thing, and we're starting, I'm starting next week, are continuing our instructional rounds. And instructional rounds, you'll be invited to instructional rounds, it's teams of individuals being in classrooms and observing practice. And one thing we're going to look at, we're going to look at instructional practice guides and the core actions, because the Common Core test is based on core actions. The rigor's higher. And so those are the practices in our classrooms that we need to really take a close look at and make sure that, that we're, they're, they're well-tuned. And so the process that I've done the past five years at Washoe, we provide instant feedback to the schools, stickies on chart paper, the school leadership can take that to their staff however they see fit. It's not evaluative, but it's about informing good practice. That's going to be something that we, that we end up doing. I want to look at the possibility, I want to know what Washoe schools are performing well. I have connections there, I don't know if any are performing well right now, but if they are, I'm going to match up like schools, and I really want our schools, there's nothing better than seeing good work in practice, and then getting feedback from those schools coming into our schools, if we can move forward with that. There, you know, the most important thing is we're talking about child, the students and their performance along the way. We can't wait for MAP assessment, especially now with our results. We need to be talking about formative assessments on a weekly basis, and, and then looking at that, that instruction, discussing that instruction, formative assessment, and then discussing next steps, and where we go to inform. It shouldn't be about remediation at all at that point, it should be about looking forward and where we go next, and meeting individual needs. It's, it's going to be, I'm not going to say this, this is not going to be easy work, but the most important thing is that we all, we all come together and we share these good practices with each other. That's another piece that I have taken place this Friday. I've noticed, visiting all the school sites, everyone has a different way of looking at data, and there's some amazing practice here, looking at data. And when I would visit some of the school sites, they didn't use the same process, I weren't aware. So we're going to have a share-out, good practice share-out. I also, another thing is whenever I see good practice, or we see good practice in classrooms, we're going to share out. I created a SharePoint page in the past where we had, we shared out good practices so everyone could access. So it's really going to be about coming together and, and really stopping, not focusing on the pie in the sky, but really look, because it's overwhelming, but looking at what we're doing on a daily basis, our practice. And I think if we can focus on our instruction, and we can reflect and provide feedback, we're going to move forward.
Joe? And like Ron said, there's a lot of questions, and we're going to run out of time, I'm sure, but just to start from, in my opinion, ground zero, we know what our scores are. Tonight, we learned where we stand as far as the state goes. As far as the national average goes, I think I've asked this question before, what is a good score? I mean, how do we, how do we rank nationally? And I know that gets us into a conversation of, gee, we don't get enough funding, this, that, and the other thing, but, you know, how far off the mark do we think we are? Forget about where we stand with Nevada, because I try not to compare us to Nevada, because Nevada as a whole isn't doing well either. We're not known to be ranked well in much of anything. So where, as far as nationally goes, where do we stand and where are we trying to get to? And I'm not saying we want to get there next year, but if a score's scoring, if a school's scoring 46% in math, where would we like to be, all things created equal?
So currently this year, we only have these results for Nevada, because other results haven't been reported yet. But I would anticipate, if we were 15 to 20 percentage points higher, that's where, when you look at school districts that are doing well on the smarter balance assessment, that's where they're in, that 15 to 20% higher than where we're at.
And our, our scores kind of range, depends on where we're looking at it with schools, but when we say 15 to 20% higher, do we want to be in this 60 percentile range, you know, 55, 65, 70? Where, and that might be different for ELA in math, but that's what I'm trying to understand, because 15% higher than 30 isn't great.
Yeah, so high would be around the 60s for ELA, for math, it would be a few percentage points lower.
And just for clarification, because how many states are using the ASBAC? Not very many, right?
Yeah.
16, maybe?
It started off quite a few states, and then over time, that number has kind of dwindled. So it's, I'm kind of uncertain at this point how many states are still part of the consortium. And once results start to be published, then we'll, we'll know.
And the point of that is, it just concerns me with using this as a national comparison when there really isn't a national test. This is a few states that, that do it, so to compare ourselves, there's a lot of different factors there, but I don't even think this could be, it's only comparing against those states that are taking it, which is significantly less than half.
And that's, and I misspoke a little bit, when I say national average, I did mean the states that are involved.
Yeah.
Just so we know, we're, you know, it's like a footrace, where are we at with the other competitors?
Yeah, I think there's 13 last year, 13 in the states, you know, going.
And some of that's a little bit, because some of them are doing it at like different levels, like some have adopted all of the standards, some have tweaked the test a little bit, so it's 13, but there's an asterisk next to that.
So one more question related to that, if not a lot of states are doing it, and the number of states involved in this are dwindling, is it, do we want to stay in this ASBAC, or is there a better gauge that we should be involved in? And I'm not saying, gee, we're not doing well, let's jump ship, but what's a good measure, or any of these a good measure?
It's a state test, so.
It's a, yeah, but.
The state determines.
The state determines it, I know, but I'm just, I'm speaking kind of more generically here. I mean, I'm trying not to say anything about the state right now, but, you know, I don't, I don't want to measure myself compared to the state of Nevada, but I'm just wondering, is there a good assessment out there?
The state, the teacher in the classroom, their daily instruction, the formative pieces that they use with their students, and our district benchmarks that are aligned from the standard, with the standard straight to the ASBAC, but really, it's the teacher and the formative assessments that they use every day. That is the most important thing.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, let's, let's kind of follow up, kind of in that area. And Chad, you talked about, again, the timeliness of assessment. We're not waiting forever for a semester or a quarter. It's. It's timeliness. Now, let's go back, Ricky, and let's go back to the learner center model. It was all started with our Race to the Top, and and this is where we let this unfold. And I'm glad Jeremy Jeremy is here because I'm going to refer to what he said last time. You know, we went through, but one of the main components of of the of our Race to the Top in our learner center model came out to be the learning guides. Three-week increments, timely. I'm going to ask you, did we assess the questions? You know, we had targeted goals, essential questions. Was were the essential questions geared to mastery of content? Were they geared toward Nevada standards? What were they geared toward? Were they intended to be passive or active? I've talked to teachers that use it in an interactive way. Some of the questions are like memorizations of facts. What is it that we did at the district level and at the principals' level? Well, we haven't got the middle school principals here. And Chad, this is where you you come in with it with the elementary schools. It's our connecting link that was in our Race to the Top grant, which seems to be just, it wasn't mandatory for anybody to use it, but keep in mind, we're going after 70 to 80% of the students that are dependent learners. 20% of our students are independent learners and probably don't need these learning guides. But this is what's going to change, in my opinion, not only the S-BAC scores, but making our kids truly college and career ready. It's not, and Richard and I talked about this the other day, it's not the memorizations of fact, but it's a combination of elements and how to express, and like you said, Chad, writing, clarity of thought. Where, what have we done? What have, who, is anybody accountable for these learning guides? Or are they just there, and it's it's a nice thing to say, but really not used?
So I would say that while we're all building these learning guides and moving from curricular area to curricular area, we missed out on the monitoring. And when you monitor something, it gets done. And part of what, if you look on our Plan Continued, where it says, focus on instruction, observation, coaching, and instructional strategies, those learning guides are part of the instructional tools for a teacher to use to get the the clarity of the message for the unit across to the students and for the parents, which are located on our website. And part of the instructional observations and the monitoring, we used to be really good at instruction. We had T4S, we were always in those classrooms monitoring. We need to get back in there. We know that curriculum and assessment and instruction are that three-legged stool that's necessary, and of course, the materials that the board supports are the are necessary for classroom, school improvement in the classrooms, individual student improvement. But I think we've went away from observation, not because the principals aren't out there in the classroom. They're working very hard on the new teacher evaluation, making sure that they're meeting all their deadlines, doing it, following the rubrics, and those rubrics are are high-quality rubrics. But what what has come back on the high school accreditations, as well as what we're seeing when we do observe, is we are missing the rigor of the standard. And we need to go in there and make sure that those learning guides, if they need to be revised, need to be revised, but making sure that they're using them in whatever way the teacher wants to use them in. Because that's part of the autonomy of the teacher. The teach, they can hand them out just like a like a like a document to the to the students. They can break them up and put them on the white, on the smart boards. They can put them up on the walls. They could do whatever interactive activity for the students to understand what their expectations are of learning. So Ron, the learning guides are there, and they are our tool and a high, can be a high-yield tool. We need to work on monitoring, which is why a big focus is focus on instruction, and the tool is part of that.
Okay. Since we're going to have a series of meetings, at the next meeting, would we give a report on the learning guides and are the essential questions geared to a response to the Nevada standards? Or are they something less than that?
The response is that they are geared to the Nevada standard. Do might they need revision for some of them? Yes. We do that each year. We take a look at all the pieces.
Okay, and then following up with that, then, then a report back, are the teachers, how many teachers are actually requiring a response that would be indicative of the Nevada standards? So the kids aren't caught by a surprise with the S-BACs. If they have to respond to a question, which is, you're saying, is geared to Nevada standards, which we should see that same question or a similar question on the on the S-BACs, are they responding in a way that is required of the S-BACs? And I say this not to be taking a test, but to understanding the standards and how it helps them in life. And that's that's a different, you know, it's a different approach. So if you could just report back as who's doing it.
So Ron, I want to respond to your question, but also answer a question from previously. So you were, the question was about kind of is the S-BAC a good test? So one of the things we have to keep in mind is that the world that our kids are going to graduate into is different than the world that existed in the past. So everybody's excited about autonomous cars, and that's exciting, but there's a lot of jobs that those autonomous cars are going to take. So if our kids aren't college and career ready, they're not going to be prepared for that next step. And so that's the reason why Smarter Balanced, the Weta Access Assessment, the ACT, all of those assessments have shifted towards college and career readiness, which is a much higher standard than what it previously was. All of our assessments were developed by our instructional coaches. So all of the MIU assessments were developed with, one, the standards in mind. They went through each and every science standard, each and every math standard. Now they're going through each and every ELA standard to identify what exactly that standard meant and built assessments around that. And they also looked at the Smarter Balance Practice Assessments, all of the materials that are out there, to make sure that the assessments for those MIUs are at the appropriate rigor. And one of the kind of challenges with that is for some folks, they're going to look at those tests and say, these are too hard for my kid. But the reality is, that difficulty level is where they need to be in order to graduate college and career ready. The learning guides are the, it kind of goes backwards from there. So as a teacher, you have your MIU, you know what is on that three-week assessment, you know what needs to, the students need to learn by then, and then you have your learning guide that helps them to get there. If at the end of the year, your students have mastered all the MIU's assessments, there won't be a surprise on the Smarter Balance Assessment, because every three weeks, you have a temperature check to see if you're on pace for your kids being proficient. If your kids are mastering the material, they're going to master the S-BAC. If they don't master the material, chances are they're not.
I agree with you, and 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 you just said it, nobody monitored this to make sure that we were doing this. You know, it's it's not fair to our students for this to to continue. And maybe you can come back with who's going to be held accountable for connecting all these pieces. We have a very powerful tool in the learner center model that has not been used. And and is there an understanding of the of learning? Just bring back some information. I've gone out, talked to teachers, talked to students. This thing is really not in good shape. From the limited number of ones that I've talked to, as to the use of the learning guides and what they intend, they were intended to do, and it's that timely assessment to see if our students are grasping and learning the Nevada standards. It's simple to say, it's difficult to approve. Jeremy, at the last meeting, or our last, when he talked about, oh, yeah, you know, we got Mastery Connect, we got going in the classroom, you see the teachers talking about compare and contrast. But what Jeremy didn't say is, who's getting to the students? We, you know, agree, the top students are going to get, no matter what we throw at them, compare and contrast, and the teachers are, you know, all excited about doing that. But are they getting to the stu, that's 70 to 80% of the students that are dependent on, dependent learners that need our help. That's going to rise them up. So, anyway.
You know, and I just wanted to, you know, when you're talking about the learning guides for the elementary level, I think that we want to enter it with an understanding. It's going to look different. And so at an elementary level, a learning guide might be an anchor chart. And it's really how the teacher is using it to focus the attention of the students on the learning and bring it back to the standards and assess that learning. And so I want to make sure that it doesn't sound like we're directing all elementary school teachers to hand a one page to their first graders or kindergarteners, because that's not going to help anybody. And and I mean, and I know that that's not what you want. I'm just saying, I want to be clear about that.
And just like what you said, you know, piece of paper, we've got Chromebooks for these kids. We're in today's world. You've got the interactive learning guides right there, and the response could be right there. It's it's the immediate feedback for these kids, the timeliness. We're going to another level, and it's going to take just some understanding. And Chad, I'm glad you're here, because I think we have an opportunity to 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 raise it up. I'm concerned about the middle school has been involved with this now for maybe eight years. And I, you know, the proficiency scores in in reading and in math, that's, it's not acceptable.
And the other thing I was just, one of the suggestions I have is, when we're looking at S-BAC data, we talked about, so there's these three-week exams that teachers give repeatedly, we have a lot of data in this school district. And one of the things that would be really nice for the school board is, as we get our S-BAC data, is to compare those formative assessments that are being used by our schools and our teachers to direct their instruction. So is our internal data similar to the S-BAC results? And if they're not, then we need to figure out what we're doing with our assessments and kind of realign, because that's the piece that's missing. And it's kind of like, we're all sitting here trying to to guess what's happening. And so I think that that, as we go forward with these meetings, to look at those formative assessment pieces and really try to find a correlation. Are we really anticipating that our kids are going to have these scores, or do we need to find some other tweaks? And I think the other question is, you know, which I think all of us in education fight with Ricky is, yeah, we have these tests that kids have to pass to be career and college ready, but your kids scoring one on S-BAC that aren't even ready to read the instructions of that assessment, what are we doing with those kids to help them access their learning? And so it's, it's really complex, and I think that those are part of the questions that need to be presented to a governing body of noneducators generally, to just kind of help frame the discussion, because otherwise, everybody's just kind of stabbing at the dark. And we want to, we want to align everybody and kind of move these kids forward is really what the ultimate goal is.
So, Mr. Walker, if you look on page four under Plan Continued, that's why I put those years there for, under the curriculum, the science, this will be the third year that the teachers will be working with their MIUs, the learning guides, the assessments, and the materials. This will be year two for math. And as we get deeper into the years and people get past figuring out how to use the new materials, we're going to be able to do things like that. As you, Mr. Dr. Medina mentioned earlier, if they're scoring well on those benchmarks, they will score well on those S-BAC, on the S-BAC.
And I guess, and just kind of on that same line, so I know we spent a lot of time, when I was working in Carson City, with the data matrix that Ricky put together. And you could get some really awesome data at the push of a button. And so, yeah, it's not going to be as fine-tuned today as it will be in three years, maybe, but it's something. And I think that that would help frame the discussion a little bit and help us see that we're on the right track or we're way off course.
Absolutely, which I think goes back to why we need that focus on instruction. The instructional strategies, we are data rich. We have, there, the, you know, when I think about the old CRT days with No Child Left Behind and getting in those PLCs and looking at that data and coming up with strategies for students to move forward, that energy is out there. But now, it's actually at a deeper level, and we just need to just be out there monitoring it, watching it, working on those instructional strategies. Everything you guys are talking about is making sure that teachers are teaching at the right rigor with high-yield strategies. And it's time to really get back, that's part of that three-legged stool that Dr. Perdare always talked about, instruction, curriculum, and assessment. We were focusing on a lot on curriculum and assessment. It's time to focus on instruction. We have a lot of good people out there that, when they get to be with each other and share those practices, we grow and learn. So that's why I think your your comments are right where we, we, exactly what we see as well.
Okay, we're going to run out of time, and there's people here in the audience that may want to enter into part of this conversation. So if any of any of you have anything that you would like to add, just step forward. Well, see, see now.
Just a comment I want to make, because we, before Carrie comes up, you know, we're not where we want to be, but I did see improvement just within our district on the math. That was a focus to do. And just about every school improved their levels of proficiency in math. There are pockets of really good success. A six-point jump at Fremont Elementary School, a 6% jump is 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 pretty huge. Four and a half, so seven at Carson, seven, and I know the middle school are skewed by the eighth graders that now took the S-BAC test. But it's, it's in the right direction, is the point I want to make, even even though it may not be where the state is. But there's, there's quite a bit of schools, and I don't want to not recognize the efforts that have gone in on that, you know. There's, there's some jumps in language and some, some not, so, but I think there was a good focus on math last year, and I think we did see some improvement in that. So that's my comment.
And Laurel, I don't think we're saying that people aren't trying, you know, they're trying to do the right thing. That's, that's not, it's not the issue. The issue is, are we doing right by the the students? Are we giving them the tools to to move forward? And I look at the middle schools and the ELA, and I'm going, wait a minute, if our kids can't read, they can't do math. I mean, this thing is 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 just that serious. So, anyway, Carrie.
Carrie Pryor, for the record. I wasn't planning to be here tonight, but I, I felt the need to come and speak to this I'm very passionate about this, and I'm extremely disappointed in the scores. And so I wrote a few notes on my way here, it was in my head, and I wrote it down. I think one of the things that we're not talking about and that we need to address as a district is parents. Students spend 55% of their waking time outside of our school walls. I can bring you that data. Two years ago, Mrs. Kima added, my title was professional learning coordinator, it's now professional learning and family engagement coordinator, and we're piloting academic parent-teacher teams. Last night, we were at Fritsch, it's another reason why Mr. Brown can't be here, he had his academic parent-teacher teams last night at Fritsch. We had 73% of parents in those classrooms show up. Seliger had 68% at their APTTs. Boarderwick Bray had 64%. We had low numbers at at Mark Twain, which was 34%, and low numbers at Fremont, which was 43%. And tomorrow night, we have Empire and another one at Fritsch. We need to start talking about engaging with parents as partners. The survey last year, as I reported to you, from the 587, I believe, families that came to APTT, overwhelmingly, parents marked that they are unaware of what to do with their child and how to support them. So we're taking a look at how to engage parents. The other item I want to talk about is what Mr. Hicks brought up. If you haven't looked at John Hattie's research on the effect size of what teachers are doing in classrooms and the difference on student learning, you need to look at the number one piece. The number one piece from John Hattie's research is collective teacher efficacy. It's 1.57. That's huge. Teacher efficacy is the belief that I can make a difference and that I have control of making that difference. Our teachers are not feeling that. I'm in a school every day. I'm out in buildings. I'm talking to teachers. I want day. I'm out in buildings. I'm talking to teachers. I want you to ask them about that. Are they feeling efficacious? Do they feel like they can actually make a difference and that they have the tools, resources, knowledge, and skills to do that? We need to start talking about that. The way in which we give back teacher collective efficacy is that we have given them tools. They're right in saying, they have the assessments, they have the MIUs, they have the benchmarks, they have a way to track student learning. But we need to be looking at professional learning communities and what teachers are doing in our professional learning communities, and giving back control to teachers for analyzing assessment data, for planning instruction around that data that best meets students' needs, and then returning to monitor that progress. We have phenomenal teachers in our district, and we need to honor that and say, we believe that you can make a difference. The other thing I think we need to talk about in our district is that we have students living in trauma. Students come to us that are experiencing severe emotional trauma at home, and we have socially-emotional learning that is another thing on our teachers' plates, that they are supposed to be addressing this. I highly encourage you, make an appointment, walk with me in these classrooms. I want you to see what our teachers are up against, how students arrive in our buildings, and the behaviors that they need to monitor. And lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the learning guides. Ron, I was one of the original learning guide people, along with Dr. Ward, who I'm sure could speak days about learning guides. It started with the SIG grant at Eagle Valley. Again, I think we did somewhat of a disservice in, it was a tool intended for teachers to use in their classrooms to engage learners on what's expected, right? What are students supposed to learn? How do we know if they learned it? And then, students were supposed to do self-reporting, which is what Mr. Hicks was saying, is another piece that adds to the effect size. I think we need to take that back to the teachers and say, how are you engaging students with the learning guides? How can these tools be redefined to support learning? And then, it needs to be age-appropriate. Mr. Walker's correct. A kindergartner with a learning guide, I'm not going to give them the paper. But, you're right, it's another tool, and it was intended to be a very powerful tool for learning and assessment.
And Carrie, I agree with what you're, what you're saying. In fact, I asked you about three or four years ago to give a report on, on a focus group. But the key thing with the learning guide is not only what we learn, but the learners and our model of how we learn it may be different. That's why we're supposed to have the support groups in place.
Right.
So, at the end of three weeks, if someone's not there, if they have to learn in a different way, we do it. But if we're not doing that, then we're right back to, to where we are now. And so, I agree with you. So, and we're all working together. But it's, it's not going to happen unless we bring it out and then make some definite things out here. All of us on the board, I know, care about, you know, the students. Student achievement is success in life. It begins with us. We're foundational. K-12 is foundational. And I just, we just come back, and what, tonight, we have the data from the rest of the state of Nevada, and we're behind the rest of the state of Nevada. I mean, we're not a unique school. There's a lot of trauma probably in a lot of schools of, of kids, you know, with trauma. We're not unique. But how do we get to a, a point where we demonstrate we are delivering something so necessary for kids to know how to learn, not even in this school, but, but to learn for life? So, anyway, I'll end with that. We're, we're getting close to the seven o'clock mark.
Mike.
Carrie, I, I agree. I agree with what everybody's saying. All these pieces are important. I think the teacher efficacy piece is a huge piece. And I know I have teachers already this year. I feel like I'm getting more emails from teachers this year saying, we're, we're more stressed out now than we were last year at this time. Now, we're being evaluated at 40%, where, you know, the amount of stuff we have to do that doesn't involve direct teaching is increasing again. And so, how do they get teacher efficacy? Like you said, we got to get them in control of their classrooms. We have to give them the tools they need, but we need to give them the time they need to teach. And I really, I haven't heard that much tonight. And I know when I speak to teachers, it's about 50/50. Not everybody agrees with me. But I really think we're doing our students a disservice by not allowing more time in the average day for these teachers to teach. They have too much to do. And so, that's got to be part of this three-legged stool, is, I think we do have good teachers, we have good administrators, we have good people, and everybody's trying to do the right thing. But we're just, year after year after year, not getting the results. And I don't see the time allotted for these teachers to teach increasing. And I think that's an important part of the, you know, of the stool, you know. They, they need more time to teach. These kids deserve it.
I think that you're exactly right, because if you look at Goal One of our strategic plan, and one of the objectives under there is to support teacher efficiency and look at tools that would support that. And so, I think that returning to that work under Goal One, we need to decide and prioritize, right, what is important. You do have to remove something from their plates if you're expecting something else. And I would say that the avenue to give them more time would be those PLCs. They should be working together to plan. Dr. Ward, I know we're running out of time, but Dr. Ward has a phenomenal fourth-grade team that actually I'd like to study. Two of them are new hires to our district, and two of them are veteran. One is a second-year teacher. And they decided that the way in which they would be most efficient was that they have enough trust on that team, that each of the teachers is taking one of the core content areas and doing all the planning, and then sharing out in the PLC the materials for that. Because why plan and prep four subjects when you can plan and prep one and do it really effectively, and then get that out to your team? So, I think that we might want to watch, watch what happens with that group and see. But at least, again, it's trust amongst your colleagues and high efficacy there, so.
Okay, we're, we're at the seven o'clock hour. One last chance. You got 30 seconds. Anybody want to come forward and make any, any comments? Seeing none, I, this is going to continue, and we're going to have specifics that lead directly to the kids. So, nobody's going to have a place to hide going forward. And I know everybody means well, let's, let's find that way to, to make it happen. And Chad, I think you're going to be vital in this, this going forward. So, okay, seeing no other comments, we'll, we'll end the, the board workshop. We'll begin the regular board meeting in about five, 10 minutes. Good evening again. It is now 10 after 7:00. Ruth Lee, thank you for coming.
(Laughter)
We're going to now call to order the, the regular board meeting, and it is now, yeah, 10 after 7:00. So, we'll go on to agenda item number three, that's adoption of the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments from the audience about the agenda? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes reflect, I came at 7:00.
And, and we will.
Had a good tailwind.
And Renee, Renee's probably got this in the records, Stacy did arrive at 7:00.
Had a tailwind.
Okay, we'll go on to agenda item number four, and that is superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Swirzick, members of the board. I know Mrs. Pryor, in our workshop, gave a lot of good information about our academic parent-teacher teams. I just wanted to let you know that those are going very well, and they're very well-attended. Turnout has been good. And for those of you that may not know what those are, as you recall, last year, we did a pilot where we invited parents of students in individual classrooms to come to the school. And the teachers actually taught those parents in about a 45-minute span of time, and gave them some ideas, some resources, some, some processes to actually help kids with their schoolwork once they got home. It was very well-received. And so, under-- And so, under this same process, we're expanding that this year, and we hope to see this program grow even more. I also wanted to let the trustees know that students at our elementary schools are currently in the middle of MAP testing for the fall, and we expect that that testing process should end this week. I received some information from the group of Augenblick and Palak. And this is the group that is, has been retained by the legislature to do a study for funding in the state of Nevada. And this group is doing several listening tours that gives trustees, it gives school administrators, it gives teachers, typically those practitioners in education, to give input or to provide input in a town hall-like program. And the one that's closest to us will be held on Tuesday, September 18th. So that's not a board meeting. And that will be at Worcester High School in the Hart Theater. And the time is 5:30 to 7:30. So if you think that's something that you'd like to do, I can certainly provide you a little more information. Obviously, this group of Augenblick and Palak are trying to get input so that as their report becomes solid and they make their report to the legislation, legislature, I should say, they'll have input from all of the different stakeholders. I've also, at your place, has given you a handout that advertises the Nevada Family Engagement Summit, and that will be held on Saturday, September 22nd. And you can see me or Renee if you want to attend. And I also just want to let folks know, when I first came to this meeting at 6:00 p.m., I received a call from Tasha Fuson. There was a report that Carson High School was under lockdown. I want to report and let you know, and also folks who might be watching on TV, that there was an incident but no lockdown. The school resource officers were called. They managed the incident without any further difficulty. And so, again, there was no lockdown at Carson High School after school today. So that's my report. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Mr. Stokes, I just want to say thank you to you and Mrs. Keem. I know that late Friday afternoon, you guys probably had better things to do than to meet with me and talk about the substitute issue. And I think we had a great conversation. I appreciate you both taking the time to do that. So, appreciate it.
It was our pleasure, Mr. Walker. Thank you.
We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number 5, Board Reports. We'll start with, do we have Pioner here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, Pioner High School, is that Jace Kramer?
Yes.
Okay, we'll welcome your report.
Thank you, members of the board. I just want to congratulate our first annual Polack Cannon Service Awards to our student Casey Buford for volunteering during the school year, doing lunch, and helping out during the Earth Day assistance. Our students had a great time attending our Rock Creek excursion. Special thanks to Mr. Jordan, Roder, and Mr. Hendricks for driving up and back and assisting. We have construction. It is underway. It is looking well. Walls are going up, and it's starting to make a lot of noise. Attendance is crucial to students. Students make sure to be in school every day on time at 7:35. Back-to-school night is on September 18th from 5 to 7:00. Please bring your families. The construction career day for our students is field trip. It is September 27th. The office has more information if students are interested. We're proud of our Carson High student athletes, Alfredo Galvin Rupert, Keith Bryce, and Stephen Keith, who are playing on the Carson High football teams. Students who are interested in speech and debate should go see Mr. Jordan for information. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Carson High, was it Ryan Lawler?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Ryan. I'm a junior over at Carson High School. And really, Carson High School's been kind of what you expect for the beginning few weeks of school. You know, we've been getting along. Finally, some of our grades are starting to come out, and it's mostly all set for the remainder of the year. Kind of getting through the beginning parts of our courses and more getting into the core lessons and whatnot. Still on the agenda would be homecoming, which is coming up October 13th, I believe, and the week prior. Football's going good. Other fall sports are going good as well, such as volleyball and whatnot, and tennis, cross country as well. And it's starting to look like that the school year's kind of really coming along, as I said before. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. And Don?
I talked about it a little bit last meeting, but this Saturday, September 15th, Capital Ford Drive For Your School fundraiser, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Carson High School, the north parking lot. This fundraiser benefits the Carson High School Band Program. And one driver per household. If you could come and test drive a car in the north parking lot, they'll have about 15 to 20 cars there. Capital Ford will generously donate $20 per driver. And they'll give us up to $6,000. So our goal is 300 drivers that morning. 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It might finish a little early, so please come if you can in the morning.
Okay, for Fridge Elementary School, Mr. Brown would like to welcome all of the families to this school year. And also, he wanted to explain that he had a PTA meeting tonight, their first PTA meeting. For Carson Middle School, they are beginning MAP testing next Wednesday, September 12th. And all students will test, do their MAP tests in their math classes. Also, he wanted to congratulate the girls' basketball, boys and girls' cross country, girls and boys' mountain bike teams on a successful start to the season. Basketball teams have games every day this week and a tournament starting this Friday, September 14th. And the cross country teams have a meet Friday at North Tahoe. Also, the new STEM labs are up and running, and they're very excited about it. And they wanted us to mark our calendars in advance for October 17th. From 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., they're going to have a STEM lab grand opening and community engagement celebration at Carson Middle School. And just a couple other comments I wanted to share, as I was able to attend the Carson High School open house last night. I had kids in various activities, so I was late to the community fair. But I really appreciate the opportunity to go. I know it makes a long night for the teachers, but going through and seeing their schedule and getting the rundown of what they're doing in each class is really appreciated. And then also, I wanted to thank the Carson High School cross country team for hosting the Sierra League meet last week at Washoe State Park. The kids ran over sand dunes and through the lake, and it was a really good meet. And just a shout out to the Carson High cross country coach, Pete Senet, who ran the journal jog in Reno on this last Sunday. And he first ran it 50 years ago in 1969, when it was first held, and he won it in 1969. This year, he ran it again at age 69, placed second in his age division. And so, I just think that that deserves recognition in our record here, so.
Yeah, I also attended the open house at the high school. I thought it went very well. It was well-attended. Had a chance to speak to a fair amount of parents and some of the students. I think the community partners that we had that showed up there were, it was fantastic. You know, I can't name everybody, but there were a lot of tables there for people to peruse. You know, four rows of tables in the Senator Square area. And then, of course, to support it, culinary was there, serving food. And I just wanted to do a shout out to their chicken tortilla soup. It was really good. It was so good that I went back for a second helping and blew off running that night. So, no, I thought it was good. A couple of reminders. Mrs. Grunert reminded me, so I had my daughter do it. But grad check, if you're a senior this year, make sure you get in and talk to your guidance counselor about, you know, make sure you got all your credits in shape so that if you've got something unknown sitting out there, you've got time to fix it. A lot of times, as she found, my daughter found out, she had the, everything's in order, but something was kind of logged in the office in the wrong spot. And so, a graduation credit moved to an election credit, and she had it. It was just put in the wrong place, so we had a 15-minute scare. But, you know, those are important things to check and make sure you're in good shape so you don't get surprised in the spring semester. The SCOOP, which lists all the potential scholarships for students, is now up. So if you're looking for scholarships, which everybody should be doing because there's nothing better than free money, you know, take a look and see what pertains to you and go after it. Also, senior projects are soon to be underway. I think October 12th is the first deadline for students. So I think that, I don't know what they're calling it, but it's basically your outline, what are you proposing to do, so you can get it approved by your advisor. So, school's off and running. So with that, that completes my report.
I have just a couple items. Fremont will have a parent informational night on September 24th at 6:00, explaining their school's star rating and the factors which help determine what the school's star rating is. Boarderwick Bray is going to have a PTA movie night Friday, September 14th at 6:30. So that's this Friday. And they also have a family curriculum night on October 9th, which will start at 5:30, which they would like to have plenty of families attend both events. And that concludes my report.
Stacy, both, you know, the NASB and whatever you got to report.
Okay, so first, I'll talk about NIAA because I just got off the plane after a student day meeting. Probably the biggest thing that came out of that is there is going to be a dues increase, Andrew, or AJ, for 25 cents per student in 2019, 2020. I have that amount for you. Then we're taking the next year off and evaluating it and see if we have to add another 25 cents the next year in '21, '22. So just to give you a heads up there. The other thing that probably hit us the most is HUG baseball is going to independent status. They're getting out of the 4A because they're 1 and 22, or, I'm sorry, 1 and 122. So they weren't being very competitive. So they've dropped down to independent status for the next two years to see if they can't build their program. So that kind of affects our baseball schedule. And then they put together the new realignment committee that'll start looking at the realignment process for the 2022 seasons. So, and hopefully, we'll get a 5A out of it. We have three principals on the committee this time, so it shouldn't be as contentious as it was last time. And then for NASB, we've opened up the search for the executive director position, and it's open until the 24th. And then it'll close. There's information on the website about qualifications and getting an application in. And hopefully, you'll start seeing it in a lot of media places and papers about the announcements. We're trying to get out as much word as we can and try to get somebody that's got a real good Nevada educational background. So if you know anybody that's thinking about it, it has to be somebody that can work really well by themselves because there is really no supervision day to day. So, and then the other thing is the NIAA's office is moving. They're moving into a converted church by the Nugget. And so, NASB has got to decide if they're going to stay in the Gusterson Building, which is up for sale, or if we're going to be moving with NIAA. Or then, there might even be talk about moving, God forbid, down to Vegas. So, but that is in the air too. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about all that. And then we have our meeting on the 28th, and we'll have an update in applications then that I can come back with. And then there's professional development on the 29th.
Thank you. Just a comment to follow up on the Carson High School open house last night. It was, you know, well-attended, and there was a lot of good presentations by some of our community partners, mental health, and, you know, a lot of the social, emotional needs, basic needs, and that was all good. I was somewhat disappointed because of one thing, we lost an opportunity of not having our own workplace learning specialists, having a table to let parents know of the workplace learning opportunities that are available to their students. And these, because it was a community event, she would be speaking for the community partners that were available, you know, to offer this kind. But whatever, you know, that was missing, but overall, it was, it was well-done. And a lot of people got a lot of benefit out of it. Also, let me just state for the record, we have Mrs. Lupi Ramirez, our school trustee-elect from District 1, and we've got Richard Varner, school trustee-elect. What was it, District 4? District 4, they're in attendance. So just let the record reflect that. You know, a public statement about any item that is not on the agenda that is school-related. And seeing no one wants to run up here, we will go on to the next item. And that is Agenda Item Number 8, which is the adoption of the CCSD Test Procedures and Security Plan for the 2018-19 school year as required by NRS 390.275. Sue?
Susan Keema for the record. You'll see in the next several board meetings, there are some compliance items such as this that are an annual event that I'll be going through with you. So this is the first of the season. Each year, the NRS requires that the district submit a board-approved Test Procedures and Security Plan to the Nevada Department of Education. Last year, there were many revisions, and the year before, there was quite a few revisions to the plan because our state assessment system changed for every grade level over the last couple of years. And now, I would say that the changes in our plan is more of a refinement. For example, this year's document, if you look at the page right before the appendix, it's the assurance from the principals. Though it looks like I scratched the entire piece and started all over, it really says the same thing, but it put it in a different format for better readability. There's also added examples in red throughout the document that give examples for that particular section so that who is ever, the test coordinator, has something that's a situation or an example that they could look at. And then the third is that we added a section, or the state also added a section to theirs on homebound testing for students that are homebound. Other than that, just for your information, the district provided, this manual covers the seven tests that the state requires of us. The ACCESS, which is for our English language learners. The SBACK, which is for grades 3 through 8. The ENDA COURSE, which is for our 9th and 10th graders at the high school level or middle school if they're taking Algebra I. The ACT for our juniors. The NA for students who do not take some of these others that are special needs. The science test for 5th, 8th, and 10th grade. And then the MAP assessment, which is required for Read-By-3.
Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, entertaining motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the Carson City School District Test Procedures and Test Security Plan for the 2018-19 school year as submitted in accordance with NRS 390.275.
Okay, motion, and we, again, we have two seconds. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pose. Okay, motion carries?
Thank you.
And now, we have the Agenda Item Number 9, informational update on the student enrollment in the Carson City School District for 2018-19. For discussion only, this is AJ.
AJ Feeling for the record. So we have a little update, and there were some... So we have a little update and there were some numbers and pretty graphs that were included in your board packet. The graphs have been updated, kind of frame a little bit of the discussion, kind of a unexpected trend, a couple of unexpected trends maybe in where enrollment is going overall. So we'll take a couple of steps. If you have any questions, I think there's about six slides. So please feel free to stop me anytime if you have any questions. So first, the lingo, the three terms that I'll throw around and it gets a little confusing because you jump around and I'll try to make my way through them in a way that will make sense. But you're talking first about total enrollment or head count generally as we consider it. You're not looking at any factor other than kids in seats and that's it, regardless of anything else, no waiting, no averaging, doesn't matter where their funding's coming from, it's kids in seats. So the truest sense of maybe numbers and from a capacity standpoint, that's part of the number you, you really care about the most. Funded enrollment, so when we talk about the, our funding within the DSA and you hear our per pupil amount, the funded enrollment is, is the number that gets multiplied against that per pupil DSA where our, like our, formerly our kindergarteners were .6, so there were some waitings in there, now they're 1.0. But if you're a pre-K student that has an IEP, you are still a .6. And then lastly, average daily enrollment. So this is the one that really matters. It's really the funded enrollment, but averaging across the whole year. So that's ultimately really where our revenue comes from. But that average is, again, depends day to day. And I will have a good example of the impact of that, even just so far through the beginning of the year. So these numbers are in your packet. So we have two weeks of school before Labor Day at this point, and we have for some time. So kind of in our, what you'll see historically is that the number of kids for those two weeks before Labor Day, there's always increases. And then after Labor Day, for various reasons, that usually tends to be kind of the, the real starting point. Not all kids are enrolled in those first two weeks. So looking at year to year, just you can see the differences between the schools. The, I think the schools that stand out the most really are the, the secondary schools, Carson High, Carson Middle, Eagle Valley. And we were expecting increases at all those schools, specifically at the middle schools because the, the 5th grade class that left the elementaries last year was really the, the last large elementary class that we had where district-wide, I think the number was over 600 kids in that class and none of our elementary classes below that, I think are, is close to that 600 number. So Carson Middle and Eagle Valley, I think where they were expecting their 6th grade class to be large and you can see that increase there. Carson High, we were expecting an increase as well. And it's actually a little less than I expected, but still a sigma, an increase. So the, the elementaries is are a little interesting in that we continue to expect growth there. And the, the two places where, you know, in, in my mind, where we're worried about growth are these two developments, one far on the south side of town at Schultz Ranch and kind of in the, at this point, on the northwest side of town, which is the, kind of the, the second addition of the Silver Oak build that's happening. And so there's a lot of homes going up. Fritsch, you do see a slight increase, they had quite a decrease actually last year in their population. I think they were around 5, 555 in 16, 17. So they dropped to 510, now they're back to 529. Seelager is actually really unexpected to me, just with where Schultz Ranch is going into their fourth phase, I think, of building already. And so for them to actually drop in population really surprised me. And I'll show you the, in a bit, the grade levels that kind of are grade level maybe in particular that seems to be a cause of that. Any questions so far about any of this?
Just going on the Pioneer numbers, do those include Carson online?
They do, yeah. And Pioneer is really, from a standpoint of trying to forecast population, Pioneer is, is problematic because they, they always start the year low and they add kids as the year goes on, but on a percentage basis, it's a huge increase just because they're such a small population. So, you know, trying, trying to gauge that year to year and their, their population doesn't always necessarily start in 9th grade. They may come in 10th or 11th. So they're, they're just harder to rep. But generally by the end of the year, at least the last two years, I think they've been right around 185 to 190 students. So that's about where I would expect them to end up this year. I mean, they're, they're not out of line. They're a little higher this year than they have been in prior years at the start of a year. So it'll be interesting to see how, how that population changes.
And then at Carson Middle, last year, that was a huge bump that they weren't expecting. And then they got even more. Where are we space-wise?
So Carson Middle School has now, now through the, the board-approved budget, there were seven new positions in total added from the prior year. And they have converted three rooms that, I believe two were large rooms that had been used kind of for conference room slash office space. They've converted now into classrooms. And then now in the, in the old industrial arts wing, those, the old like metal and wood shop, I guess, have been converted into STEM classrooms. So they've actually added five classrooms of space. I don't believe they really have anymore. I mean, they are, they're maxed out at this point.
Yeah, and I would just say that the hallways are very crowded with, they've, they've limited access to lockers and the, the buses. I hope that, I haven't heard him complaining, but my middle schooler, buses are very full running out there. So that may be something that they need to keep looking at.
Yeah. And Eagle Val, I mean comparatively, Eagle Valley has space, although Eagle Valley, historically, they've had numbers of students in the upper 800s. But they also had at that time, a lot of portables and they were using a lot of that kind of extra space. Their, their building really from a capacity standpoint couldn't go, shouldn't really go over or anywhere near that number anymore. So, but there is some space there, but they're also up a bit this year, 679, I, I believe is the highest in the four years I've been here. So that 6th grade, they, they really felt quite an impact of the 6th grade, the 6th grades that, well, Seelager in particular was a really large 6th grade class, so.
AJ, on the, for Seelager, since you brought up Schultz Ranch and you were surprised that we had less kids, maybe you get into it, but do we have any stats from Carson City planning? Are the families moving in just, do they just not have young kids or are the kids going elsewhere? Do we know anything about that?
Sure. So, so those numbers, we, we will actually be providing those to Carson City. So once we get our, our count, the kind of count date we've been using for that on October 1st, we'll be updating that. We've been getting a lot of information. Carson City has been fantastic in providing us information to use in our, our like mapping software that we're now using. And through that and with a partnership at UNR, I have a student coming down to help me with, with some of, some of that work and I've gone through some training. So I'd say within the next month and a half, we should have a pretty good idea of what population we're actually getting. Those are some of the areas I'm really excited to see, what, what are we actually, you know, getting out of those areas? Because I would expect with newer homes, that they would be bringing in younger families. However, given the price of those homes, I don't know that's the case. And, and so you look at what's happening at the secondary level and you think about, well, is it families that maybe are a little bit older and maybe further along in their careers and they're moving to Carson at that point, but they're bringing middle schoolers and secondary age kids? So it'll, it'll be interesting to see, but I'll have some really good data probably within a month and a half, two months.
Did we ever figure out how many came over from Argent?
You know, I, I don't know, I don't know that answer. That's a really good question. I think, because Carson, our, Carson High tracks.
We, you know, the district opened the doors to the Argent students. We had special transition meetings over at Pioneer and that will account for some of the increase at Pioneer. As far as the latest number, I don't know. I'd have to ask Mr. Jordan or Mr. Zona to see who ended, because I know I was signing some variances in this throughout the summer. And even this fall, there was some final decisions made with students.
Sure. And I think with Argent too, towards the end, I believe that their population was only maybe around 120 kids and I believe only about half of them were actually Carson City residents. So a lot of them, they were doing a lot of online from other areas. So how that translated over to us, I'm not sure, but that's a good question. We could, we could try to find out.
AJ, the drop in students in the early childhood education. Going back a few years, what has been the norm for that, that program?
That's actually, 56 is a closer number to historical norm, the 72 the year prior. So that number always grows as the year goes on. So as, we have to be clear that that early childhood program is students that, for the most part, they're getting identified, they have IEPs, they have special education needs. So as the year goes on, through, through various ways, our special education department identifies these kids or families are starting to bring their kids in, even at age 3 in this case, they may only be three years old. But it's something, by the end of the year, that number will be over 100. So even last year, I think it ended up at like 116 or something like that. So it's just, but again, it's important to remember, these are 3 and 4-year-olds. So it's a lot of families that, you know, maybe they've thought that there's some needs or to have their, their kids taking a look after some issues, potential issues, and they may get identified and then we can start providing services to them at a younger age.
Just a question for clarification, the 56 in the student support services, where are the other pre-K students included? Or does that 56 include the students at Mark Twain's pre-K or?
No, sorry.
The Boys and Girls Club? Where, where are those kids?
Yeah, that's, that's a good clarification. So all of these numbers that you see here, these are actual enrollment by site. So the Empire pre-K kids are included in those numbers. The Mark Twain pre-K kids are included in those numbers that you see up there. So the, the numbers at, at student support are truly the kids that are just in that building.
So where, where did the Boys and Girls Club pre-K classroom go?
So that's a good question. And I, I didn't want to confuse you as we were going through this. So truly, they're not accounted for in these numbers. I wasn't sure, because we've never shown that before. And I actually, I meant to bring it up because I wasn't quite sure. So they, they in our reports come up at, in the Mark Twain numbers and I have to, for various reasons that, so I have to take them out. So if you would add 14 to Mark Twain's number, that's really the number that I see, but I take them out because they're not truly in that Mark Twain building, they're at the Boys and Girls Club. So next time we talk, I can separate that out and now everyone will understand. Okay, so moving on, this is the graph, one of the two graphs that was included in your board packet. And it just gives a little bit of a historical look at populations at the middle school, high school, and elementary school level. The, the high school, or the middle school level is the, the orange line at the bottom. I updated the, the very last, the 2018-2019 number with the numbers as of the school date today. So you can see the, the numbers are trending up again at the middle school level. The, the line just above that is, is the high school and you can see again, there's that trend upward. The numbers above that, and there's a very specific reason, there's two different graphs within your board packet. In, in 2013, the district was still providing half-day kindergarten. So in 2014, we went to full day. Or we started in 13, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting now, but I know in the graph, it's right. So when you look back at numbers in the early 2000s, we really did have more kids at the elementary level. But it's important to understand, and that's what the, the second graph tries to normalize the impact of that, because while there were more kids, because at the kindergarten level, we had more kids, but it was only half-day kindergarten. So they were only taking up maybe two classrooms, having a morning session and an afternoon session, rather than having four or five kindergarten classrooms that we, we have now. So from a capacity standpoint, this one is really what I, what I would look at. And you can see that while we're actually down a bit from where we were historically, it's not, from a capacity standpoint, it's, it's not as, as large of an impact, I guess, in, in, once you get rid of the half-day kindergarten. So this is the breakdown of enrollment by, by grade level. And so you can see the, the pre-K district-wide is at 174. So that goes above and beyond that number, just at student support services. The, the kindergarten number is the one that, I wasn't expecting it to be much, much, much higher, but not quite as low as it was. That, that's really the one that kind of caught me off guard. At the rest of the grade levels, I don't know that there was really anything out of, out of expectation. I mean, you'll have variances of plus and minus all throughout, but the kindergarten was really the one that was much lower than expected. And Mr. Sworzak, you've, you've asked about this before and just to, I guess, give you a look at what the trends are, when you talk about kindergarten, the, the only thing you really have to go on is, is birth data. And so the Department of Health and Human Services, I have to, I'm still waiting to get updated data from 20, well, actually kind of finalized data from 2016, because this, what I have was draft information at that time. And then 2017 data of the number of births in Carson City. So what's interesting is you, you look back in the early 2000s and you're well into the 800s, high, at least high 700s for some time with the number of births. However, then you have a horrible recession and a lot of those families leave. Because what you'll see is that now if I, if I'm a birth in 2005, I should end up in the 20, the, be the 2010, 2011 school year being a kindergartner. And if I have 800 births and it only translates into 551 students, that doesn't quite make sense to me. So obviously a lot of folks left when, when the depths of the recession started a couple years later. And to have some of those kindergarten numbers in line where it's in the 550s and we had 555 in last school year for kindergartners, yet we only had 553 births five years earlier in Carson City. So you can see that the number of resident births trending up here towards the end. Again, that 600 number in 2016 was a, was not a finalized number at that time. They, they, the newest year is never considered final until, where they have data, until they have another year to kind of go through it and sift through it. So I should be getting that as finalized and then the 2017 birth rates and we'll see where those, where those go. But that is, from a standpoint of trying to predict kindergarten sizes, that's about all, all I can work with. So looking at just last things, the, the first day of school that we had on August 20th versus today, September 11th. So you can see the, the total enrollment of students at 7645 after the first day of school, after today, 7866. Funded enrollment, so what we get, DSA payment for, 7517, now up to 7732. So in the budget that you approved back in May, the, the ADE that we worked with that was projected was 7725. So while that's rather close, it's actually too close because what happens over the school years, we slowly, usually, we slowly lose students generally at the secondary level. Last year was quite an exception in that we, we really didn't lose nearly as many students as we had in prior years. So I'm hopeful that, that trend continues so that on average, we end up around that, that number for budgeting purposes. And I just thought it'd be important to And I just thought it'd be important to point out, and this is kind of a fun exercise I hadn't done before, but we talk about, there's that huge growth, right? So from August 20th until 16 days later, we added a lot of kids for whatever reason they weren't in school yet. And what the impact of that is, because it's all about your average daily enrollment, every single day counts just as much as every other day. And so if you have the assumption that all the kids in school today really should have been in school since the first day, we lost about 771 days of kids. And then if you look at it from a funding perspective, every day a kid is here, we get about $40 of funding. So you multiply those days lost by that $40 per day and we have potentially lost about $30,000, $31,000. So from an, you know, an instructional standpoint, kids being in school is important from a funding standpoint, it's important too. So. That's all. Have any other questions?
I was just gonna, so are you recommending that we start school after Labor Day?
I wouldn't be against that.
AJ, do you have a total number of McKinney-Vento students starting on this count date?
I, I don't, but we could certainly get that. That'd be an interesting kind of group to look at and see what the difference is, for sure. And with any of, any of this sort of thing, I haven't, I have not at this point looked at differences between subgroups, but that's definitely something I think we could, we could pull.
And just to clarify, probably you'd want to wait just a little bit because every year they have to re-certify that those kids qualify again. So typically, it depends on when the school gets that information from the parents, so.
Well, and I was hoping to break this down by school as well, just to see if there's any differences. Maybe some of our schools have very unique ways to encourage folks to make sure they get in there and get their kids registered and get them in on time. So to see maybe the impact and that'd be good information to pass on to the office managers and principals as well. So that's something that I can definitely do.
Any questions, concerns? Questions from our new board members? Okay, seeing none. AJ, thank you. Number 10, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD policy 513, reporting pupil progress, second reading for possible actions. Sue?
Susan Kima for the record. Changes were made to the policy as requested by the board at the August 28 meeting. Most of the discussed changes were focused on the regulation with minor changes on the policy. Changes include cleaning up grammatical errors and adding a definition of mastery. And at this time, if there's no other questions or...
So I was just wondering, just a couple of things that I noticed. So on the first line, when it in quotation marks, it says "the board," I'm wondering if we don't want to just separate that with a comma. It just, I'm not sure quotation marks is the appropriate. Yeah. And the other thing I was wondering is, you know, when you look at the purpose of grades or whatever, and then you have the one line that says, "Serve as a link between home and the school." And in my mind, I kind of thought the how, and it serves as a communication link. And I don't know if we want to add a little aspect to that. I mean, it's fine, but if you leave it the way it was, it's just kind of nebulous. Just having a grade doesn't link the school to the family necessarily, but it does communicate the student's progress. And so that's kind of my suggestions.
This is an action item and, Sue, referring back to this, often as we go through our standardized testing and mastery of a subject becomes important because it does equate to an increase in standardized scores. Anyway, any additional questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make sure I'm reading the right one.
I was like, I was on the edge of my seat. Are you gonna do it or not?
I am. All of a sudden, I got a wave of exhaustion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the revisions as presented with the comments made by the trustees this evening and approve September 11, 2018 as a revised date on CCSD policy 513, reporting pupil progress.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience and seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, discussion on proposed changes to CCSD policy 543, safe and respectful learning environment, free from bullying or cyberbullying. This is the first reading. Sue?
Susan Kima for the record. During the previous legislative session, Senate Bill 225 required changes to the safe and respectful learning environment policies. The district discipline committee comprised of administrators met to review the NRS requirements and work together on the changes presented tonight in this policy and regulation 543. Changes this time, I felt, were quite straightforward and because the district's discipline committee had worked extensively with Mr. Pavlakis and attorney Ann Alexander in the past, the changes fit fairly easily into the policy structure. Something for you to know is the definition of bullying and cyberbullying did not change like it has passed in every other session, which helps staff for consistency. Changes centered around specific types of training, rights, and needs of particular populations such as special needs students and students with diverse gender identities is a required change. And then requirements for reporting investigating bullying and cyberbullying investigations, there were changes to that as well. Most of the, as you know, the policies are global and therefore, most of the changes are actually spelled out in the regulation, which will be next. Do we have any comments, changes, additions?
Just a comment on this, but just a question with the training that is, the superintendent will establish requirements which will provide training of members of the Board of Trustees. That's not include, is, I'm thinking of the training that the legislature requires for Board of Trustees. Does it include cyberbullying and bullying? And is that, I'm just wondering, is this specific to the school district or NASB on who would provide that?
From recollection, I think that was before they did the training bill. I think this was one of those ones where we have the ethics that we have to do and the bullying, and that didn't have anything to do with those six hours of training. That came after.
After.
I think the bullying and the ethics ones was the session before that.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll look forward to seeing you next board meeting. Okay, let's go to the regulations. And that is agenda item number 12, discussion on proposed changes to CCSD regulation 543, safe and respectful learning environment, free from bullying or cyberbullying. Sue?
Susan Kima for the record. Changes to regulation 543 address directives in Senate Bill 225. So the following changes have been made to this regulation. The discipline committee felt, if you look on letter C on page two, that the education and training section deserved a complete rewrite so that staff and the public had a clearer guide to the training requirements, especially the new requirements on the rights and needs of specific populations like special education and students with diverse gender identities. Also, SB 225 removed the word principal throughout the law. In the last addition, it said administrator, principal, teacher, coach, other staff member, and they've removed principal throughout the law because the administrator could be the principal. Under section D3, that is on page four...
Sue, before we leave that part, did we need to add volunteers in here somewhere? Because if they see bullying, aren't we supposed to, aren't we supposed to...
The words are right out of the law. I'm wondering if the volunteer is actually in policy that would be directed at volunteers. Would you advise us, Mr. Pavlakis?
I believe there's a separate policy that addresses volunteers, but we'll check and confirm that at the next meeting.
We will. Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Under section D, number three, which is on page four, under that section, complaint procedures and resolution, the law now gives guidance on what the school must do when working with law enforcement when they're investigating the incident as a criminal act. The school must make sure that everybody is notified, but they can delay their own investigation until the results are in from law enforcement investigation. D4, under notification, was rewritten because the discipline committee determined it was confusing to the reader. Safe Voice was also added in the section as a resource.
On that section, just reading on four under notification, page four, and then carrying over to page five, the notification must be provided, and then it goes to a colon and a bullet point, the end of the school day. And I feel like it should say by the end of the school day or to by the end of the next school day.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
Thank you. Also, in this new, in the revision to the regulation, there is on page seven, there is a protocol that's been added for cyberbullying or bullying incidents related to special needs students. And then finally, on section 11, titled exceptions. NRS does not apply to pre-K students and it also, in this case, does not apply to adult, with adult, these types of behaviors. With the pre-K students, developmentally, they're not necessarily ready to take on all the consequences related to bullying and cyberbullying, and oftentimes are parroting the people around them. And as far as the adult, against adult action, that's taken care of in human relation, or human resource type policy.
One more comment on that, on paragraph 11, paragraph A, if the behavior is addressed through measures.
We're missing the ED.
ED on that. And then one, one more that I caught on the page before, oh, actually, how many pages? Two pages before, page five, under, it's the paragraph directly above paragraph five on page five, set forth in this section, not set forth this section.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, on, excuse me, on page two, section C, education and training. The first paragraph, the very last sentence says, "Such in-service and training shall include..." Should that read, "Such in-service education shall include?" Because we struck "and" training everywhere else. So are we just, or am I just reading that wrong?
I see what you're saying. It is provided in the policy of this district to provide in-service education about how to create. So that's in that first sentence.
And then the last sentence should say, I think it should say, "Such in-service education shall include." Right now, it says, "Such in-service and training shall include."
Sure. One and two are about training, but I think it needs to be reworded.
Just however you think it might be reworded.
Sure.
And then on page three, I'm not sure if this is wrong or not, it might be intended, but section D, paragraph one, reporting, we've struck out, we've struck principal everywhere, but then we say about midway through, "Or at-school sponsored activities shall report it to the principal or designate." Are we correct to say principal or should that principal be struck and we should say administrator?
Administrator.
Right? That's it for me.
And Sue, with this regulation and some of the wording, especially in the education and training, how does it tie in with our safe health professionals policy?
So what we'll do on, Mr. Clario has monthly meetings with our safe school professionals and I'll go over this bullying, once it's approved, I'll go over this with them. I know Mrs. Cortez will send this out district-wide, but we'll put some time into this with the safe school professionals. And each school has a team that works on social emotional learning and will make sure that they understand what the changes are. In fact, October 4th is our monthly meeting for the discipline committee. By then, hopefully, this will have been approved. And on that meeting, what the administrators will be doing is looking at the parent notification forms that are in Infinite Campus that they send home to make sure that they're correct or if they need updating. They'll look at the resources and the resources, the social workers will have a huge piece on putting together resources for families around bullying and cyberbullying. They're part of a team, especially at Carson High School, they're part of that team with the deans and they work together with, to put out social and emotional learning opportunities around the bullying. And also, what'll happen here too, is the dean might investigate the bullying situation and if, and there has to be a safety plan for the victim and folks that are involved in the bullying incident. And the social worker has a role in that. And then after, let's say the discipline takes place and the meetings all have been held and the reports have been, you know, finalized, after so many days, the social worker tends to be the person who does the follow-up because there's required to have follow-up. You don't just take care of the incident and then leave the children out there. You need to have that follow-up and the social workers are a big part of this.
Any other questions, concern? Okay, Sue, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 13, discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution in support of INVEST 19, a legislative document created by the Nevada superintendents and endorsed by the Nevada Association of School Boards. For possible action, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This, I believe, is the 11th edition of INVEST. It began because the school districts in Nevada would attend legislative sessions with their individual agendas. And because of that, legislators were sometimes listening to 17 different superintendents and sometimes 17 different board presidents that were going in different directions. I believe it was during Governor Gwynn's, I think that's right, I think Governor Gwynn came to the group at one time and said, "Listen, if you guys are going to try to be effective at the legislature, you should come together as a unified body." And that was when the first INVEST document was created. And so this is an attempt to do likewise, to take general topics impacting education, put them in a reasonably straightforward way that could benefit legislators and the public to understand more about some of the needs that are proposed by this document through the superintendents. Those items consist of, in this particular version of INVEST, which is kind of a clever term, you'll notice that... term, you'll notice that INVEST is actually spelled capital I and then capital NV for Nevada, and then the word invest. But this document then is, is intended to cover the following items. One, a general increase in state funding in K-12 education. A desire to provide stable funding for the system. Something that I know is dear to your hearts, to increase local control. And seems like that changes with nearly every legislative session. Item number four is to protect district ending fund balances. I know that the conditions of Clark County's changes through collective bargaining have resulted in arbitrations where the ending fund balance for Clark County has actually been below that 8.3%, and yet, the arbitrator still continued to press forward and voting in favor of going beyond what statutory numbers are for those ending fund balances. And then finally, create budgets in partnership, which was a request to just have greater influence from school districts. As you know, during a legislative year, the session is going on, our boards required to submit a tentative budget in April, well in advance of the end of this, the legislative session. And then our final budget has to go in before the legislature has ended as well. And so those kinds of things really create difficulties, I think, in general for education in Nevada, just given the, the timing of things. And so some of these items obviously are going to be part of the INVEST document and part of the superintendent's lobbying process as the session begins. The document that you have in front of you is, consists of one page of kind of the Reader's Digest version, and then about 10 pages that goes into a little more detail. As soon as we receive the actual printed document, which comes together in a nice glossy document, which is funded, by the way, by Clark County School District, I'll make sure that I give you folks a copy of this document for your own use.
And before they print that, that first paragraph, the second sentence, "Student success is and should be the core focus of every aspect of public education," it's repeated twice? And I know it's important enough to be repeated twice. Was that intentional or not?
I don't believe it was. And while I know that Vice President Wilkie has worked on the document that's before you for consideration tonight in terms of creating a resolution, which certainly can be wordsmith as you folks see fit, but...
Just me, why me?
Right. And, and so, so what you have in this particular format is not the final version, but it was, it was the, the very close last draft before it goes to it. So Clark County School District's proofreaders and their publishers and all those things will go through this with a fine-tooth comb. So I'm hoping, Trustee Crossman, that they have your keen eye.
Any additional comments, concerns? This is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt, as submitted, the resolution in support of INVEST 19.
Second.
Motion, second. Questions concerned from our two trustees-elect? Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to put out there before we do this, that we did bring this up in, at NASB with the executive committee and the joint committee, and it passed. There was one descending vote from Churchill. I don't know, I wasn't sure quite about the basis, but something about property tax. I'm not sure Carmen really understands the basis of it. And I don't expect that Churchill will not support this when it goes to their full board, but I just did want to disclose that.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Swerzak. Members of the board, as you know, with your endorsement of this document and the endorsement, obviously, of the superintendents, it's a very powerful group that will, then, you know, this information will be seen by those individuals that are currently running for the legislature and those that are longtime members. And so I thank you as we kind of link arms and go into the session. Thank you.
And thank you for all the superintendents for bringing this together.
That's what I was gonna say, is that we all complain, as educators, we all complain about what should be, but sometimes, we have to focus on coming together and making sure that we get the word out. And so I think thanks for your work in this as well.
Agenda item number 14, approval of the consent agenda.
I'm, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, don't go.
Go for it. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion, two seconds. Okay. Any consideration or comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor? No action, but I just want to point out again, the September 26th Community PLC at Carson High School, 6 o'clock, it might be an important meeting going forward. And...
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I mentioned in some of my updates that a group from Las Vegas area called Fund Our Future will be at our next board meeting on the 26th, or, sorry, the 25th, and then on the 26th, the next night, at our community PLC. That group will be making a presentation to our community PLC again. So they're, they're trying to enlist other interested parties to help in that whole process of changing our funding system in the state. And so, yes, we, we would love to have as many attend that, those two meetings as possible.
Agenda item 16, requests for future agenda topics. You know, there are, Richard and I talked about some of them had been requested before, the one on artificial intelligence and the future of K-12 education, that'll be coming up soon. And then, again, the, the one on our safe school professionals, the policy that we pass in that, the suicide policy prevention and intervention, a lot of that's gonna be coming up, and we'll get, other than even our staff, we'll have state representatives and, and others that will be part of that, that meeting. So, and, and no other future agenda items? With that, without objection, we are adjourned.